I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got quite the packed house tonight and it looks like we've got a lot of good news to share, so I'm going to throw it over to Superintendent Hogan.
All right, thank you Chair, members of the board, wonderful audience tonight. We do have some very fun, good news, things that has put our school district and our community at a buzz for quite some time and with that I'll, and for some time continue. With that I'll invite up our Activities Director, Bill Cheetah.
Wow, that rarely happens, so thank you. Love you even more. Good evening Superintendent Hogan, Chairman Cordis, Board Members. One quick thing, I did go over to Bachman today to sign off on the tennis courts and they look awesome, so if you get a chance, did some wonderful work over there, our tennis players are going to be pretty happy with what ended up happening, so a great improvement on that facility, so, little off the subject, but I was pretty excited about that today. So this spring, actually into June, was last, June 17th I think was my last event, which is longer than normal but for good reasons, but I traveled over 650 miles in about the last three weeks, going between Mankato, Chan Hassen, Minnetonka, Dundas, Hamlin, all these different places to watch our wonderful student athletes have what would be considered an amazing spring, so I was blessed to be a part of it in a small way. Again, it was a great ride for, when I look at state tournament and I look at successes that we've had, these are, these are years in the making, these are kids and parents and coaches who have put time and effort into programs and this becomes kind of the antithesis of all of those efforts and then the community of Farmington, so I think we have a lot to be proud of, so I'm going to shut up now and I'm going to like take the opportunity to let the coaches come up and talk a little bit about what happened this spring with their program. So the first one I'm going to call up is Steph LaVictor, who's our girls lacrosse coach.
Good evening everyone, thanks for inviting us here. As you can see, I don't have very many people with me, but I will explain where they are in just a minute. Before we get started, there's a lot of people that I want to thank, Superintendent Jay Hogan and your administration, thank you so much, you were at our kickoff and you've been a big supporter of us, so thank you so much. Our Activities Director, Mr. Bill Cheetah and his staff, Karen Donnelly, everyone that helps out, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that a lot of the kids don't know about and they just do a wonderful job, they make my job much easier. Jason Berg, he's a big supporter as well, I'd like to thank David McKnight and the Fire Department and the Police Department as well, they gave us a really nice send-off, I don't know if anyone saw that on Twitter or Facebook or any sort of social media, maybe you're even there, it was fantastic, it was, we felt really, really good going to state and representing you guys and ourselves. I also want to thank Marshall Laynes and Tom Severson, they donated two Coach Buses for us to our last two games for the state tournament, so that was really fun and they were air-conditioned, so that was really nice. I'd also like to thank my assistant, Brad Albano, he is fantastic, he does a lot of the legwork, he's really dependable, he's a great, he's a great person to have in your corner and have help out, so. Couple other, I want to thank the parents and the athletes, obviously this program makes no sense without everyone's involvement, and then our Booster Club, they take care of meals, a lot of organization, they paid for two additional coaches, there's a lot that the Booster Club does as well. This season we went 15-4, we were undefeated at home and one of our other jokes is that we were undefeated in our white jerseys, because that's the only color jersey that we won in at state, but nonetheless, we're undefeated in our white jerseys, so that was cool. For the first time ever, we were the Section 1 champs, we've been the runner-up ever since I've been here, so it was cool to finally break that barrier, and we finished fourth overall in state, so we drew the number four seed, so I guess you finished right where you thought we would. We beat Stillwater in overtime, we had a, an interesting goal that went in, but I can't take it away from our kids, they worked really hard and they did earn that. We had lots of individual awards for our all-conference, we had Lexi Stanley, Cam Carrero, Josie Laubie, Ashley Steffes, our honorable mentions were Christine Steffes, Lexi Laubie, and Michaela Rebels. We had three all-state athletes this year, Lexi Stanley, Cam Carrero, Ashley Steffes, and for the first year ever, we had an all-tournament team and that was, or an individual make it, that was Cameron Carrero, and then we had four all-state academic and that was Marissa Agutter, Lexi, and Josie Laubie, Ashley Hessler, and then our four captains all have college opportunities in lacrosse later on in their future, so. It's been a really, really fun and exciting season and we hope to be back representing again, so that's it.
Okay, the next group I'm going to bring up is the drama-filled girls who, led by this wonderful young lady, battled all year and took that to the highest level and brought home the first state team championship for Farmington High School, so that's pretty cool, so I'm going to bring up Coach Paul Harrington and let him talk about his team.
Well, I don't have any notes, I shoot from the hip, so the girls know that and I start mumbling and stumbling, but first thing I want to ask, I'll have to talk to Mr. Severson, because when we got the air-conditioned bus to Mankato and Austin, I had to do the driving, so I don't know. All you guys got a driver on the deal, but I'll talk to him on that.
We tried to get you to drive.
Yeah, save a little money, it worked, but no, we had, I mean, I don't even know where to start, just, you know, really an awesome season, and, you know, I can start with our season, and we were 17-3 after regular season play, finished second in the, in the conference, and, and really, by an eighth of an inch, a quarter of an inch, we would have won the title, the ball was just, it would have been over one quarter.
Still being discussed.
When we were over one quarter of an inch, we wanted to tick the foul pole, but it ticked the foul pole and we lost by a run and that was a two-run homerun, but you turn that around, we would have won it, so, which would have been amazing, and, so yeah, I mean, regular season was awesome, and, and then we got into the section playoffs and I've been involved in a lot of them and come out on top in a lot of them, and this is probably the most difficult one I've ever been in as a manager, as a coach, and then as for a team. We won our first game three-zip, real close game against Oatana, and it just got harder after that, we beat, the next three games are all extra innings, we beat Mayo 4-3, and we were down 3-0, down 3-2, we had, down to our last out, runner on first base, Taylor was, Jasper was on first, and last out, we don't get a hit, we lose, and Emily Burdan hit a double, scored Taylor from first to tie it up, and we won in extra innings. Next game we play the defending section champion, New Prague, and Ellie Rust gets the game-winning hit, walk-off hit in extra innings, 3-2, and in the championship, probably the longest game of my life. Seriously, it was the fourth inning, I thought it was the 14th inning, it was just like forever, and we beat them 8-7 in nine innings, so it was really a tough section play, I'm just, just amazing, and a great win for our program, and we had to state and basically everybody's playing for second place because Chan Hassen's going to win it, right, I mean, that's what they say, so we got the number five seed, we went on to beat the number four seed Cottage Grove, we went on to then beat, meet Chan Hassen and we beat them 2-0, and just an amazing win, and then, no, they were number one seed then, and then we beat the number two seed Anoka for the championship, and that's where they were ranked in the state, one, two, and four, and New Prague was seven, so we beat a lot of good teams to get our school championship, wasn't like we backed in or anything, or, you know, we, you know, just, we beat them all, and congrats to the girls, they did a great job, so. Yeah, so it was amazing run, we had multiple awards, all-state, I should say all-tournament team was Emily Burdan, Maddie Mulkin, and Emma Frost, all-conference, oh, testing me here, Maddie Mulkin, Emma Frost, Emily Burdan, and Olivia Hazelbaker, all-section Maddie Mulkin, Emily Burdan, Katie Dooley, Ellie Rust, and one more. Olivia? Hazelbaker? Is that you? I only got one contact in tonight, so I'm kind of blind, but I drove here, so I said, you know. So yeah, we had a lot of awards and, yeah, it was just a great season. One thing I'll just say as far as maybe you guys would be interested in, it was right before the tournament down at, we practiced down at Loyola, and then, and I told the girls four things that day, why I thought we were going to do well, and then I came up with, the night before I said, I told them the same four things, they didn't really remember what I told them, but, the one thing I told them, I says, one of the four, and I'll tell you, I says, we were battle-tested, we played in the South Suburban all year long, and we had a tough schedule all year long, and we were ready, when it came to Cottage Grove Park, or, or Chan Hassen, or Anoka, we were ready, and we played them, we played them tough, so I think it was a great decision to go in the South Suburban, whenever you guys made that decision way back when, not way back when, but a few years back, we were ready, and it was, and to us, it was just like we were playing another South Suburban team, whereas when we went to state in our previous attempts, I don't think that was so much the case, we were, when we seen Stillwater, or Forest Lake, or Bloomington-Jefferson, you know, we didn't see teams like that usually during the season once in a while, but now we saw them all the time, so, I guess I thank you all for that, and yeah, congrats to the girls on a state championship, it was awesome.
Mr. Cheetah, did Coach Harrington get some small award as well?
Yep, Coach Harrington was named the Section Coach of the Year, so congratulations. It was magical, it really was, I mean, I was there for all the games at state and all the innings, and I do believe that there was an angel on their shoulders looking after them and helping them, and it was pretty fun, so congratulations to them, and my favorite memory is going to be Rod Frost running 100 miles an hour from the outfield fence and almost beating his daughter to home plate after the homerun. Our next group will be track, and we don't have our boys coach here, so I'm going to call up also the section track girls coach of the year, Mr. Tom Hart, we'll talk on both boys on here.
I get some seniors that really want one last shot to be able to do something like this, so I'm going to let them get up here and speak a few things here. We had a great season also, it was wonderful lots of times when we, we have a little bit of different sport, and when you talk about weekend, week out, we were 17-3, or those kinds of, those numbers, doesn't quite work that way for us. What Jason Berg calls what we get to do is called controlled chaos, so lots of times early in the year when it's really not nice outside, there's 200 kids in a gym and some are going this way doing things, others are training with this group, and it just, it looks, it's controlled chaos, and, you know, early on, Adam Lippold, the boys coach, and I were talking, and he said to me, boy, I really, really envy your team, I'd really like to have your team this year, and, and as we sat and kind of started planning some things out, we knew we had a chance to really do some really great things. We had the most girls we've ever had come out for track this year, there's about 100 girls that came out and that presented some of our challenges for us that we haven't had before, but that was, it was wonderful to see how much participation, and from there on in, the season started rolling, so I'm going to let these guys tell what they want to talk about and then I'll add in those missing pieces, so. What's up first?
I didn't know we'd be speaking today, so.
You need to have a note card.
We were the first ever section champions, and at sections we qualified five girls for state in seven events, I was in the 100, Amanda was in triple jump, and Maya Scott was in the 100 hurdles, and Loren and Anna were both in the mile and two mile, and...
Do you want to talk about?
Sure. We had the, all five girls that qualified for state also qualified all-conference, so that was really cool, and we did have academic all-state as well, I don't know who exactly those were, but...
We had a lot of kids, a lot of girls, so that was really nice.
So, that's nice. Oh, right, and we ended up being able to make second place at state, which going in, I don't know if we were all really aware that we were really in it to place and podium for state, but as the day went on, we realized, wow, we're actually doing a really good job getting a lot of points, so it was really cool to be able to not only win the section but also be up there second place in the state as well, so that was really cool.
So I'll fill in some of the missing pieces for you guys then too, so I've done this for a little while around Farmington, the track, and there's a number of times we've been maybe third at the section meet, lots of times fourth, but we've never gotten past those, those people to the west of us, and it was really bittersweet to be able to hoist the trophy over there and get a shower from these guys as they dump some water on, that was, it was 90 degrees, so it felt great for one, but two, it was just, it was really bittersweet, it was really kind of fun to realize they had arrived, and going into, for our event, there was a prelims day and there was a finals day, and we had a number of kids do well on day one, and we knew as we talked in practice on the, in between those days that we had a chance to win this, and just as the meet went along, we were still in first, we were still in first, we were still in first, and then it came down to the last race and we were down three points, and, no, we were up two points, and we knew we had to just finish in one, one spot, right behind Lakeville South, and lo and behold, the girls weren't satisfied with doing that, they wanted to try and go to state, and so they went around and they, they came really close, and we were just trying to craft the team just to be able to win the meet, and I was going crazy because it was unbelievable, it was really, really awesome, and we held the ladies off and we won by three or four points, and that was really something special, but then to go a week later and get to the state meet, you know, I can, I can show you our trophy, the first trophy that we have for the section meet has our whole team that competed at sections, and we had five individuals, five ladies show up, and to be all-state is something pretty special because you have to be the top nine in your event to get there. We had two state champions in the mile and the two mile, and they really kind of helped set the tone on day one, and we were in first place to start day one, and we just all sat and talked about this on Friday coming home saying, does this sound familiar? And it was exactly how the section meet played out, and all through finals day, we were still in first, we were still in first, and as I watched Amanda triple jump, I'm thinking to myself, I'm counting, and, you know, we're kind of geeks with the numbers that way, us the track guys, we knew what we had to do to win, and St. Michael Albertville was who we were going to have to beat, and I accounted for everything they were going to do, and we knew what Amanda had to do, and we were going to, we were going to be the champs too, and we were going to follow suit, first team champ, second day, another team champion coming through, and then I watched another girl step on the triple jump runway that I didn't account for, and I went crap, so, so we lost by six points, so, you know, we were six points from being the second team champion for our school, but we will take the second place one because it was quite a feat, it was, it was really awesome to watch these ladies do, do that well, so, that was our season.
Just a couple things, so, so make sure I get this slide right, Loren won the 3200 and Anna was third?
Correct.
And then Anna won the 1600 and, and Loren was fourth, so that's a pretty good year, they each won a state championship and they were one and two in state cross-country, that's a pretty good year, so, and they're both young and they'll be back next year. One thing too, just, I'm going to say the time wrong, but I talked to Emma earlier in the year and she wanted to, she wanted to set the school record for the 100, 12, was it 12.3?
Yeah.
12.3, and she'd been at 12.31 and she's been so close and so close, and she was winning, but she just couldn't get that, and I thought, what was really fun was at the state meet, she ran 12-2-7, so she ran her best time against the best competition. I thought to myself, it's because the first time she had to chase somebody, normally they were chasing her, so, congratulations, and, I mean, Amanda, if you think about it, she started track for the first time mid-March, and she finished fifth in the triple jump, which is not a easy event for someone who's done it for a long time, so that's pretty impressive, so we, like you said, we all had great kids here, a lot of great accomplishments, you know, and, and we should be very proud of that, so, thank you.
Thank you all for coming out and congratulations to all of our athletes who competed throughout the year.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to set the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Yep.
Awesome.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion by Singold, a second by Carrero, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? All right, I was just so excited to get to the good news.
Been there.
And that was exciting good news.
It was.
And another thing to maybe send someone with a lot of time to scrambling for is to find out what other school district had a season like that for, for girls or boys, I mean, when you think of the number of students from our school, the number of girls that had to play at elite level, to have three teams, one, two, and four, I don't, I don't know if that's ever happened, I've never heard of it, you know, to have three teams at that level, so I think that'd be cool to find out, we may be in a class all by ourselves, so, that's very, very cool. Just a couple other things, quick, first, a really neat item, the Practicum Child Development students completed their technical skills assessment and seven students earned their national pre-professional certification in early childhood education, the score above 70 percent. Those earning 70 percent or higher are able to immediately print a certificate that is valid for three years and demonstrates their knowledge in early childhood education development. Students worked hard all trimester, learning and practicing that knowledge with their yearly learning lab for preschoolers. They had a record high score of 89 percent on this national assessment, the high score was Kylie Roach, congratulations to all these students. And then North Trail has its summer program up and running, Kid Connections, Steppingstone, Star, and the summer library program are in full swing, the halls are a buzz and, you know, as they are in the high school as well, you know, a lot of, so many of our buildings are, again, been out of commission because of parking lots and other sorts of things that, the ones that are normally busy are even more so, so, that's what I have.
All right, thank you, and I'll throw it back to you for the superintendent update, if you've got anything else for us.
I do have one, just one thing, and I'll make it quick, and a number of you have heard me talk about it, everyone's heard me talk about it, that maybe my best week I've observed in my professional career was, started with the last board meeting, and I, that day and the next day, we had teachers who were involved in a program that they really designed and worked together and funded with Knowledge Works, and there were more than 50 teachers working and having just the highest level conversation I think I've ever heard a group that large have about learning and education and what, and the kind of things we're after as our strategic plan, it was just really a stunning couple of days, followed up by Wednesday, we had WOLD here, and we had just as many, if not more, of our teaching staff, really kind of from not, from eight other sites, which were two teams from the high school, who were designing learning spaces to meet their learning goals, and so the things that, and we are going to have some of those groups of teachers come in August and talk about how it is that the spaces they've designed are going to improve student learning, the process they went through that day, and then also share some of their designs, and it was just, I was so excited about that day ahead of time, you know, but it went way beyond any of my expectations, especially when WOLD brought in 18 architects. So every team had two architects, one leading them in the process and going through various teaching things about design, and then another one designing 3D modeling the things that they were after, and then their presentations at the end, I just can't imagine, imagine a better day. And then Thursday we had our admin retreat where we got to then, you know, talk about that and process all of that and see what it means, think about the last school year and what it's meant for us and what's going to happen next school year, and we planned some of our, we call them mutual commitments and expectations that we have for each other, that we have for our staff, that we have for our students, that we have for our parents and community, and so it was, it was just really an amazing and amazing week, and lots going to come out of it, but I just wanted to mention, mention that, so, that's what I have.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Student School Board member update, Taylor, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm excited to be back, I was, I missed the last couple meetings, congratulations to Lerue for graduating, I know he's going to do great things, congratulations to all the high schoolers that graduated, I know you guys are all going to do great things, and I'm excited to see where this year takes me, and I'm really excited to see all the projects going on at our schools this summer.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have our public comment, and I do not have any requests tonight for public comment, so we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with one motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the consent agenda and will be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item they wish to discuss? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Due to the fact that we have a couple new members on the board and there's some routine business items that are done yearly in this consent agenda, I was wondering if the superintendent could speak to the items on here?
Yeah, Jay, would you be able to give just a quick, I mean, some of the official depositories?
Oh, sure.
Just kind of a high-level...
Yeah, and maybe just at really high level that there's a number of things that we need to officially do, yes, designate the official depositories, you know, for, for our money and the financial institutions that we're going to be working with, we have to designate who from MDE, you know, is the authority and able to sign things that, you know, the reports and things that we have to submit, you know, and that's, and that's me, you know, authorize electronic fund transfers, lease purchase of contract goods, you know, again, another couple of items that we do every year, and those are pretty routine, I was kind of looking at the next one, authorize to make payments in advance of board approval, you know, that's really something we need to do to manage, you know, our finances, we do have things at times that, that we need to pay, that we know we need to pay, and we need to get those done on, on a timely fashion, and so you kind of pre-authorize that, authorization of petty cash accounts, we, you know, have many fewer of those than, you know, when I started 20 years ago, that was, those were, were bigger things. Official newspaper, you know, we still print all of our official notes from the board in, in the newspaper and put all of our notices there, there are other ways to do that, you know, today, but we, we still do it through, you know, a local newspaper, there are some that do it online and just put a little, little note, so there are other ways to handle that as well, but we're really not going after any kind of a change. And official attorneys, I'll say we have the attorneys listed here, but we also have others that we do use from time to time, there's certain, that specialize in certain things and an issue that you don't know is going to come up every year, but if it does, there are certain people that we turn to, so, anything else that I...
Superintendent Hogan?
Yes.
Just for clarification, most of this, we used to cover this in the main meeting and the board had made the decision that because it was routine and per statute, that we had moved it to the consent agenda, and so just for... the consent agenda. And so, just for historical perspective, we used to do these as line items, but the board, because they were routine and because we were following statute, that's why it was moved to the consent agenda. And so, unless they're recommending a change, which would come to an actionable item, these are things that will always be on our consent agenda.
Yep, that's correct. Thanks.
All right. Thank you both for sharing that update. And with that, I will now take a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Singal, the second by Doyle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? All right. We will move on to our reports and communications with a facilities and bond referendum update with Ms. Jane Huska.
Mr. Chair, board members, Superintendent Haugen, members of the community, thanks for having me here tonight. I'm here to give a construction update. To say the least, things are happening and shaking and rolling in our district. I would say probably the one thing is that I want to thank the community for their patience and understanding, as this is the time that we are able to get these projects done and not interfere with our learning during our school year. I know it might not always be convenient for them, but we really try to minimize it the best that we can, but we can't take it all away because it's the only time we can get some stuff done. So, I really appreciate the community for their understanding as we try to get these projects done. And I think the one that I'm hearing the most about is parking, our paving, but I promise you, you guys will love it when it's all done. Riverview, the first phase of Riverview is complete. They've got it all marked up and whatnot. They'll be starting on the backside of Riverview after the Fourth of July, on July fifth. Dodge is totally reclaimed on the west lot. If you remember, I had come to you and we had to do some scheduling because of some ball, a state ball tournament at the end of July. And so, McNamara was gracious enough to get that changed in their schedule. They have totally reclaimed it, but in doing that, when we were doing some testing on the subsoil, we did find some spots that were inadequate for support. So, we will be doing some corrections to the subsoil. It's not massive or anything like that, it's just in certain spots. So, we will get that done. It came to a halt last week due to the rain. So, if you drive by, they, I didn't look today, but I'm guessing they're back today because I would think that it'd be dry enough. Meadowview and North Trail kind of in the same situation. They're totally reclaimed, but due to the rain last week, they are able to continue their work. As far as Meadowview and North Trail are concerned on their phase ones, I have not heard that, that we have any subsoil corrections there. So, that is good news. Along with our paving, we have concrete work going along side by side. Most of that has to do with some sidewalk replacements and then curbs and gutters. But we continue to move along to make sure that those are safe and secure for all of our little buggers as they walk into school and all of our community users. Onto our fire alarms. We have three fire alarm systems that we're replacing, Riverview, Dodge, and Bachman, and they're all going rather well. Their, people are in there every day pulling wires, doing all the things that they need to, but real no issues with our fire alarm systems. Bachman's nurses office, we are to the point where demolition is complete. We ran into a little hiccup like you do with any construction, nothing too crazy. Some adhesive that we had to get tested underneath our tile, but it came back with less than one percent asbestos, so they just needed to put some personal care protection on. Nothing too, too concerning. So, they moved right along. There's bare floors. They cut up the floor to do some plumbing work, so we're moving right along with that. Office renovations, we have Meadowview, Aiken, and FES. They're in the same state as a nurses office. They have totally demoed everything and so now they're gonna start putting stuff back together, or I should say digging any sewer lines or anything that may need in the concrete, moving toilets, moving walls, all of those fun stuff. Those projects are going well as well. There's, we haven't yet come across anything too crazy, just total construction questions or changes. Kindergarten spaces at Aiken Road and FES, they were not more tricky, but you know, we're starting to dig in the ground and connecting back to the building. So, we ran into a little issue at Aiken Road. The sewer line wasn't where it was supposed to be. That was drawn on the plans, which is really not unusual because sometimes when, when they put them in, they, when they're initially building a building, they have to put them in a different spot for whatever reason and they don't go back and change your asphalt. So, you dig and then you go, oh, it's not there, it's over here. So, we had to dig two holes at Aiken. FES, we just had a little tricky with the tie-in of the old and the new, because the new is gonna be taller than the old part of the building and we were concerned about some snow loads and drifting and whatnot. So, we had, had to reinforce the, the ceiling there, but it all went very well. The FES windows, to be honest, I really haven't heard two words about it. I went over and I looked at them. Things are going well. They're moving right along. It's really, the FES windows so far is a really great project. One thing that I do wanna bring to your attention though, that is not part of our construction projects, but that you should just be aware of as a board, probably the end of January, beginning of February, we noticed a bubble in the gym floor at Bachman. And I don't know, it's in the gyms one, two, and three. And it was right in the middle of basketball season. It was outside the basketball court, so we were like, oh, let's just leave it and, you know, we'll, we'll check it this spring when everybody's out of the gyms. Well, we've had it checked and it's a little concerning because we did have to cut up quite a bit of the floor because there's water between the vapor barrier and the floor. And so, we are trying to currently find the issue of the water penetration into the gym floors. Tomorrow, we do have a door specialist coming out because we do believe that it, there's a possibility that it came through the thresholds on the fire doors in the gyms, but we're not a hundred percent sure. And our insurance company, I did contact them as well because this could be a pretty expensive fix. They are gonna have a soil engineer come out and take a look at it as well. Currently, talking to some different contractors and vendors, it could be an eight to twelve week fix. So, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what's going on there in case you get people asking or wondering what's going on.
Quick question. Could, could that stem from when we had that issue six years ago when we had to replace most of the gym floor in there?
Okay. Nope. That one, that one is from the, there is air handling units in the roof, well, and on the ceiling. And so, what they did to fix that, those were leaking, they put a drip pan underneath all of them. And so, that, that's not the issue with these. If he, where they cut up the floor was all along the fire emergency doors, all along that north wall.
Okay.
Is where they found all of the water. And so, they just kept cutting and cutting and cutting and so, yeah.
Now, is that something we're trying to get done this summer, fixed?
Well, yeah. I'm trying to push the insurance company along. They're a little slower on the gun than I would like them to be. I'm really hoping that tomorrow, when we have the door specialist out, that they're gonna say, yeah, it was your threshold, the water was coming in right here type thing. So, we can just move them along quickly and say, all right, let's get this going. But, yeah, it's kind of a push to keep them going and on the ball and expressing to them how important it is that we get it done sooner rather than later. I've already posed the question of, well, can we just start, you know, if we know it's the threshold or, because obviously we wanna find out where the water's coming from before we put the floor in. I mean, that doesn't make any sense. But if that's what it is, you know, can I, can we get going and you guys can finish your paperwork later type thing? And they weren't so happy about that either. So, I'll keep trying.
Because that's a significant impact if we have any gyms down to the school district overall for, once school starts. Significant. Wow.
Yeah, there's not a lot I can, I mean, I'm pushing, but you can only do so much.
Should we pick a timeframe then and notify programs that there could be an impact?
I'm hoping that, one, with our door specialist tomorrow, he'll, he'll be able to provide us some insight and that the insurance company can get their soil engineer out by the end of the week, because that's what I told them that I'd like. I even offered up, I said, you know, we have a lot of construction projects going on. Who do you need? I'm sure we have them out here almost daily or weekly, you know, we could probably help you out. And they're like, no, we need to have our own. So.
I guess one nice benefit of the basketball programs combining now is you have one user instead of two multiple users trying to, to schedule the facility on something like that.
Yeah.
Wow. Good luck.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions?
People will be happy.
Yes.
So, just from a logistics standpoint, our, our operations director starts in a week?
Yeah.
And so, with some of this stuff, will it be, I know that you have lots of things on your plate, so with his new start, will these be the sorts of things that we'll start to hear from him in future meetings, or will you still be bringing that to us?
We're still working on it, to be honest, because we also have the transition of the Bachman principal and the assistant principal. So, we really wanna be conscious of that as well. And so, we have talked back and forth about what's important, like what's the number one thing to get done, you know, and that sort of thing. So, we're still working on that. I might still finish up these construction projects since I'm so vested in them. And then he'll pick up on anything new that comes in. Like the gym floor, for example, he could probably take that over because it's his gym and he knows everything that's wrong with it anyways. So, we'll be working through those. It'll, it'll probably be a combination of both of us for a little while.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Next up, we move on to our administrative action, with the first item being the adoption of the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget, again with Ms. Jane Huska.
Thanks. I think it should be relatively short. There's not, we talked about it last board meeting, and there's really not a whole lot of changes to the budget. The one has to do with food service. We'll talk about the expenditures first because that was my mistake. I forgot to update it from the previous year. So, on page, I believe it's page nine of the packet, I just updated the expenditures to the current year of three point one million dollars. Revenue-wise, it did change by roughly twenty-five thousand or so. And that has to do with the USA, USDA guidelines for meal prices. They have a paid lunch equity tool that they put out due to the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act in two thousand ten. And basically what it is, it states that federal dollars cannot subsidize non-federal programs. So, since lunch is federal and state and local dollars, you have to be able to prove to them that the federal dollars aren't subsidizing all of the other dollars that are going into the program. So, you have this little calculator that you need to go through to say yes or no, how are we going and whatnot. And so, this year, it showed that we needed to increase our lunch prices by five cents. So, that is the difference in our revenue. So, all of our breakfasts for elementary through the high school will be a dollar forty. Elementary lunch will be two dollars and seventy cents. Middle school lunch will be two dollars and eighty-five cents. High school regular lunch will be two dollars and ninety cents. And then the high school premium meals will be three dollars and seventy cents. And that's something that we have to do. We don't get to vote yes, we wanna do it, or no, we don't wanna do it. It's mandatory that we do it. So, our lunch prices will be increasing by five cents for this year. The other thing that the board asked me to, or asked the administration to take a look at was the graduation fees. And so, we wanted to have that conversation as part of our budget, so I'll let you know what I found out. One thing that we had talked about as a group was really, it's no more different than an event fee. So, like when you go to a basketball game or you go to a wrestling meet, or when you go to a football game, it's kind of the same thing, right? You're paying to go to an event. So, it's more like an event fee. And when you go to the, those events, it will cost you, an adult will cost you seven dollars, a student will cost you five dollars. And then if it's a section game, you know, it costs you a little bit more. So, in looking at our fees of forty, as Farmington, we have an event fee of forty-five dollars. And that, to my knowledge, I would, I just quick looked back and that, I was able to track it back to the twelve thirteen school year and it was forty-five dollars. I've also been told it's been forty-five dollars for a very long time. So, we haven't increased that rate in many years, is my understanding. In looking at the surrounding schools, most of them have a range of twenty-five dollars to sixty dollars. Now, there are two schools that are zero. My guess is one of them will probably have a graduation fee this next coming year, just because of the budget issues that they have. I don't know that for sure, but they got a long ways to go in closing their gap. And one other thing to note with that is that there is no one that has denied the graduation ceremony if they so choose to wanna participate in it. There are ways and steps in place to assist those people that wanna participate in this event. The costs for graduation run from fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand. And there's a lot of different variables that it depends on the cost and the range. Depends on the school, or, I mean, the number of students. It depends upon if it's inside or outside. Outside is more expensive. There's equipment that we need to rent. You have to have more staff because it's, it's a bigger venue. So, it, outside, outside does cost us more. Almost the entire cost of the event is paid through the event fee collected from families. There's just some nominal stuff that the district pays for, per statute, that we are responsible for paying for. And the other thing to consider, for you guys to consider, is, you know, good times versus bad times. You know, seems right now, things are okay, right? We're doing okay as a district. But what happens all of a sudden if we fall on hard times again? You know, and inevitably, I'm, I'm gonna guarantee that, I don't need a crystal ball. At some point, we will. You know, the state's not always gonna be able to keep up with what we need and whatnot. So, at some point, we'll, we'll do budget cuts again. So, I want you to keep that in mind and, you know, do we wanna take that roller coaster of adding, declining, adding, paying? So, just something to consider. And also, we took a look at offsite venues and to see how that was, would play into this. And there's some things that you should consider. One, how far in advance do you need to reserve these venues? Lot of them will be a year in advance. And the thing that you lose with your outside venue, say Roy Wilkins or Target Field or Mariucci, is you lose that whole aspect of being able to choose when you have graduation. A lot of times, they will tell you, you can have it. And in talking to Mr. Berg, he said there was one school that had it on a Tuesday at three o'clock. You know, so you, you lose that whole control of when you have it and whatnot. And I, for me, that's, that's, that's up to you, but I don't like that. But the other thing you have to consider in that, so not only do you have the cost of the venue, unfortunately, we weren't able to get exact cost, but like for prom, to rent Target Field, it was ten thousand dollars. Now, it'll cost more than that because we need more setup than what they have for prom. We talked to West St. Paul, they use Roy Wilkins and it costs them eleven thousand dollars. But the thing to consider on top of that is that all of the participants, families that are going to watch, they'll have to pay for parking because that's not gonna be free. The other thing that we need to consider is we'll have to pay for transportation in order to get the students to that venue. So, those are things to consider. And one thing, instead of going offsite that I'd like the board to consider is we looked into streaming live and we got a quick estimate on the equipment that it would cost to stream our events live. And it's roughly thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. I think with some bond dollars that we have, this would be a perfect opportunity to put that system into place, not only for graduation, but we are getting full for a lot of our programs that we have, band concerts, choir concerts, plays. And what a great opportunity to be able to share it with more of our And what a great opportunity to be able to share it with more of our community members than just those that can fit in our space.
Mr. Chair, I guess I have a question on that. First of all, graduation was phenomenal for everybody that helped. I mean, that was incredible, looking out at like six deep up on the top. I guess a couple of things, I guess, when you're throwing out numbers to look at, if it's $11,000 to have it offsite, and it could be anywhere from $15,000 to $25,000 for us to do it, I mean, there's a substantial possible cost savings on that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, rough numbers again, I'm not holding you to these numbers.
Yeah, because I would have to, you have to take into consideration what is in that $15,000 to $25,000. That is just not all, I mean, there's staff, so you'd still have staff. There's, there's other things.
Right.
But I'd have to do a deeper dive to really know for sure.
Because isn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, are bigger numbers, or is it seventh grade right now, or eighth grade coming up? Are we going to be able to even?
Two years.
Oh, excuse me, two years, have it in the gymnasium? Or are the parents going to just have to get two tickets for that big of a class? I mean, that would be another concern. I mean, for me, example, thank God it was outside, because I had people from New York and North Carolina flying for the wedding. We had 15 people here, so it was worked out great for me. But if I had to have tickets, I would have to handpick who went. And that's, that's tough when you have all these people coming in out of town. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I'd hate to get it away from our own facility, because it is incredible to have it here, I will tell you. I mean, it was, it was unbelievable with the sun setting that night and everything, it was beautiful.
It was nice when it set, when you're staring.
Well, it was warm.
But the photo opportunities were awesome. For more advantage points.
I guess it'd be nice, I guess, to look into it just a little bit more of cost savings and, because again, we're going to have to make a decision, I guess, in two years.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Roosevelt, Jane, thank you for presenting this information. I would have liked to have seen it before you said it tonight, but I appreciate you answering the questions and having it at the table today. The question I have is, you mentioned that there's chart, I mean, what is included in that fee? Said it covers most everything. What, within that $15,000 to $25,000 amount that it costs, fifty, yeah, $15,000 to $25,000 it costs around the event that's primarily covered by the fees, what is included in that? Is that custodial? Do you say staff? Can you clarify a little bit more? What all is that?
It can be custodial, it can be all the supervisor-type staff that we have there. It's all of, if it's outside, it's all of the rental space that we need, or equipment, not space, obviously not space. All of the rental equipment that we have to purchase. I wonder if I can quick find the big ticket items.
I think the big ticket item would be time, just seeing the custodial staff out there. My gosh.
They were out there two, three days beforehand.
Putting it together, and it was incredible.
Do you have more questions?
I had to comment, but I can wait.
So here is my two cents on it. I think the board had made an assumption two years ago, and let's just move it to Bachmann. We got a lot of feedback from the students about why would we go there when here? I would be fully comfortable supporting most recommendations by the administration, but I'd really like to see student school board members and potentially a subset of student leaders within the high school, maybe freshmen through senior year, to say, we need to look at what, as our classes get bigger, what would be meaningful to you, and have some, I would like to see if there's any opportunity that you guys put together some, maybe some recommendations, but have a spot checked by our students, if possible. I mean, the next graduation is a year away, and so we've got some time, but if we're, if we're considering alternatives, it would be nice, I think, hearing, I agree, from a parent's perspective, I don't care where it's at, I want my family members to watch my kid go across, but I think it's also, it's one of the biggest events in their life, and, and it's interesting because as soon as it's impactful to the students, I think parents also go, oh, yeah, I didn't consider that. And I just feel like it would be, it wouldn't hurt for us to do a, I'm not talking huge community event, but maybe involve some of our student leaders to have just some initial conversations, say, what do you think?
Yep.
Mr. Chair. I think that's very important. The reason why I brought this forward was because I was hearing from many community members that they were appalled that there was a cost for the graduation ceremony on top of the many other fees and graduation between cap and gown, and we could count on the list. I understand your student has many opportunities and choices of things that they can choose to do, and the site, I understand is a choice. They don't have to walk either, that's their choice. But I look at it as the culmination of their academic career in our district, happens once in 13 years for their students' lives and the important life of your child and the student's academic success celebrated that night. I would like to see us be able to budget how we can make it work to cover that one event that's amazing and incredible, and we don't know the difficulty some of those kids had. I know I talked to some parents that were like, don't tell him, but you know, it's been, we didn't know till today that he was going to walk, and we're so glad he's going to walk, you know? And that whole, that whole piece, I just think of the one thing that we should be able to figure out how to budget, should be graduation, regardless of where the site is. That's negotiable, but I think right now, I would just like to be able to have that included in the next year, for the next year, seniors, and then maybe have some time between then and the next graduations following that, to figure out if we want to change the policy, if we need to change the venue, and definitely incorporate the community in that piece. Wouldn't want to forget them.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I understand not wanting to have students pay a fee, but knowing that we've looked at other districts and other districts do the same thing, and it's the same for college graduations and everything, it's, why are we going to be, like, why do we have to be different to do that? It's, I mean, you're talking about another $25,000 that we want to find in the budget to do graduation, and if our class sizes are just getting bigger, that cost is just going to increase. Whereas if we do charge a fee and we have more students, that cost may get, either stay the same or even get lower, because it's spread out among more students. But I, for me, I don't see just finding another $20,000 in the budget when this is, not to say, we have, say we have to stay status quo, but I paid to graduate, and that was, I don't want to say how many years ago, but, so that's just kind of my thoughts on it.
Graduation, probably. I haven't beaten.
Well. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One of the reasons why I brought this up is I was talking to other school members from across the state and found out that technically the letter of the law that a district cannot charge for diploma, which now granted, I'm not saying that we're breaking the rules here, I, but I do think it's kind of a gray area. If you ask people, when do you get your diploma, when do you graduate? It's at the ceremony. That's what they believe. And I just think we're kind of skirting it, and letter of the law, we're fine, but I just think it's the one thing that we should be able to figure out how to make work.
So just point of clarification, they don't actually get their certificates at that event, they get it after.
I understand that.
So I just, I, I'm a little concerned at what you're kind of stating at the table, because what my concern is, is that I feel like you're putting the administration in a position that says that they're walking the line of what's legal and not in this, and I don't think that's the case. I think that they have very clearly met all legal requirements to the students or not, and like many districts, we're charging an activity fee, just like we do for prom, just like we do for other events within our district, because there's a cost associated with it, and we made a choice to have fees for things or free. I know we've had a number of discussions about other things, and, and so I think that the thing that I'm trying to articulate here is that when you start bringing up legal issues, there's no legal issue. And I don't want you, I don't want you bullying a decision, is how I am interpreting our, our administration based on throwing around legal things that aren't even in play in this situation.
I don't believe I'm bullying. That's interesting that you bring that up, but it's, it was just brought to my attention, and I wanted to bring it forward as in a discussion, and it's just something that I looked up. It's statute 123B dot 37, and it, it's just close, and I just thought it'd be good to be in. I'm not, I'm not making it as accusation that we aren't following the law, but when I was talking to other board members and saying, well, you can't charge for graduation, just kind of that vernacular piece. Regardless, I know we are following the letter of the law, but perception as well. And I've asked many questions, I've asked this to be brought to the board table multiple times before this meeting, and this was the first time I got the answers, was at the table today, when I had sent emails about it since about May. So I just wanted to throw it out there and say what's going on.
Question, Jane. Students who aren't able to pay either the full $45 or, or partial, are they scholarshiped? And where does that money come from?
Yes, it comes from this account.
Okay.
So anyone, anyone that wants to walk can walk. There's, those that are in need, they know of the steps that they need to go through in order to get a scholarship, and no one has ever been turned away.
I just have one more comment, Mr. Chair. Just, just for clarification, so everybody knows, everybody thinks that if we get a bubble over the stadium, that's going to solve the issue. Well, actually, it would, I've heard this. Actually, it would reduce it, the size of graduation, if we had a bubble. Because I have a lot of people ask me that, and I contacted a couple of places that have them, how many they could house and everything else, but that is not the case.
Yeah, bubbles are actually pretty small and very, I would love to have them, but they're, it's really expensive.
And bleachers and, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Probably get an email on that, so I just wanted to let you know now.
All right, thanks.
I just want to share my concern real quick. And Jane, you touched on it before, we're doing pretty well right now, and I'd hate for us to do this for the next couple of years and then see this as low-hanging fruit, four, five, six years down the road when times are a little tough, and then completely change course. I do think it's a great idea and concept, but I just, I don't know if that's something that we should be engaging in at this point. And I do also just want to appreciate the time that you've put in this. I know Jason put in some time a few weeks ago, when the questions originally came up, and there was a lot of similar information that was shared then and now, so I appreciate the time, both you and Jason, when he's watching at home.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have one additional question. When you talk about the live streaming and it being between 30,000 and 35,000, is that to, to just be able to do it at all for anything, or is that not for instance?
Yeah, that's just to buy the equipment to get us set up. So I, my opinion again, and I know Mr. Berg would follow in the same footsteps, and I'm sure a lot of the administration would, that it'd be money well-spent for our district to get this equipment and to be able to stream things live.
I think that'd be something interesting to look into. I think it'd be worth having that conversation down the road.
I know that sports teams use the huddle for free on that, but obviously, this would be a, more of a mass production on that.
Yeah, yep. It'd be cameras, the whole servers, the whole nine yards.
And capabilities, from personal experience, are much better. I mean, you can, you can get the stuff and, and the qualities, I mean, people can watch, but the quality with what Jane's talking about is substantially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I were to entertain the motion to cover the cost of graduation for the next year and then do reconsider it in the following year, where would that come in the line item, Jane, on the budget?
Where would what?
Where would that come out of the budget? What fund would it be, and how would that affect the outlook of what you're showing us tonight?
If we, if we cover graduation, it would come out of the general fund, because that's where the money is. And so what would happen is, our revenue would go down and our expenditures would go up by the amount of graduation.
I'd like to make the motion to cover the cost of graduation out of our general fund budget for next year, for the 2018 graduation, and within the next year, have the time to evaluate what we do for future ceremonies as proposed.
Got a motion by Saucer, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yep.
I think I'm, I'm struggling tonight, because at our last board meeting, it was discussed that we would get this information prior to tonight, and so I'm kind of more of a processor than that, and so I'm struggling to, you know, and I'm new at all this, so I don't really know kind of the process with it, but I feel like there's been issues where we've asked for information and we haven't gotten it in the timeline that we were told we would get it, and so without having time to kind of more think about it, I don't, I, I hear what Board Member Saucer is saying, and I, I can understand and appreciate the thoughts behind it. I feel like I would like more time to process through, what does this all mean? I mean, this, I feel like this is something we should do in a work session, and.
Jane.
So we have to set the budget at the end of June for our next year.
Right.
But we can, we always have opportunities to, I mean, and we have had budget amendments a couple of times throughout our year. And so it's not to say that, to your point, if you feel like there's, you need more time to process, whatever we vote on tonight, this is something that we could come back and have the, ask the administration to revisit, and we would amend the budget, even if it is for next year. And so in respecting that aspect of it, if, if the board feels like we need more time to process that one nuance, we legally need to set our budget, because it's the end of June. And so not to hold, and so just to understand that aspect of it, it's important for us to set our budget tonight, because we are starting a new fiscal year. But if it's important for us to wait on an amendment to it, so that people have time to process and that gets brought back, or we can move forward with Board Member Saucer's amendment, and the board can vote on it, and then we move forward. So that would be our logistical process, so to speak.
I was going to ask Jane the same question.
Yep, that's what it is.
Totally fine.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if you don't pass a budget tonight, what that means. You know, I, my little mind goes a little crazy and go, oh, that's kind of like the legislature, right? They don't have a budget, so therefore you can't pay any bills and you can't pay any employees until you have a budget approved. But I don't know that for sure, so don't quote me on that.
Is there a reason why we didn't get this information before tonight?
I was waiting until we got the most recent information from graduation ceremonies of this year, and then it just, the ball was dropped between communication between myself and the superintendent and Jane. But the questions had been answered previously by Principal Berg, to the best of his knowledge, when the questions were initially brought up.
When was that?
In May.
Mr. Chair, to clarify, you had mentioned that it'd be brought up when we talked about the budget at the meeting after graduation.
Yep, and that was, that's our fault. We, I had asked Jay to relay that to Jane, and that ball was dropped.
So we have an active motion on the floor right now. I just want to call that out.
So there is a motion, is there a second?
I have more questions, unfortunately. Do we have to continue with this motion, or I mean, I hate.
Mr. Chair, you can second it, and then it's discussion. You don't have to stop the discussion.
There can be no, there can be no second, it dies for lack of a second.
Discussion's over.
And it's done.
I'll second it then. Well, okay. And then we can have a discussion on it and vote.
So, correct. So now you've seconded, now we can have further discussion. Table's no open.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I put it out of order and then.
While we're, while we're in this hodgepodge of this, just to clean things up, since we're doing logistics, I'm going to make a motion to, for receipt of reports and communications, if that's all right.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Got to say, a motion by single, a second by good row, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, so discussion on?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I guess, I've received quite a few questions on the fees and et cetera, et cetera, too, on that, but I guess I got to understand it to like what Kristin's saying. I get, before I can even vote on something or make a motion on something, I, I need to just understand kind of a cost analysis, too, in future. In two years, if we're going to be in a pickle, you know, of we can't use the gymnasium, or we have to reduce the tickets, you know, where do we stand? Does it make sense if we can even afford to do it now? If we do it now, we're going to be able to do it in two years when we have all those students coming through? Because if I'm one of those parents sitting here and two or three years from now, when we pass, we pass, make a motion and pass it and saying we're going to allow free graduation, and then it comes back three years from now, it's, I don't know, 60 bucks, because we have to have it at Target Field or wherever it's at, because we can't house it here. I guess from a taxpayer, I'd be upset at that. I mean, I guess that's where I guess I would look at Jane or whomever to do a cost analysis on, you know, kind of a future, maybe five years out, of what we look at with our, our students' numbers on that. I do look at the, a graduation fee a little different than a activities fee for a sporting event or something else, because that is a last kid's hurrah, but yet we do have to cover our costs from a school district somehow. So it's kind of a catch-22 on that, how do we cover it? So it's kind of a catch-22 on that. How do we cover it? And I have been out of the loop for a couple of weeks, so I apologize. I did watch the last meeting, and I missed that part where we asked for more information, so I apologize on that. I'm playing catch-up with graduation and everything, so.
So, so, so maybe to move thing, things along, you know, because we have a big item tonight, and that's our budget, and we have this other thing. I'll just, I want to say, Mr. Chair, that I, I don't think it's accurate to say you dropped the ball or anybody dropped the ball. This is really pretty standard. We have a huge thing, our budget. A board member asks a question and wants clarification about something, we generally do bring it to the next meeting. You know, it's not like the whole board has something you all want to consider. Someone has something. We can answer it in general, like we've talked about before, like Mr. Berg could do or I could do, that it's about twenty thousand dollars. Now, when Jane goes through and figure it out, so she gets the right number, that's a huge deal. And on her plate, that's very difficult, and it really was up until today that she was working on it, had to get some pieces and things from this year. This is really what it takes. And so we have an item that we've had for over a decade, that's never raised, that we've never had a question from a parent. We've never had a call, anyone ever say something, and we have just a nice question, well, what is that? You know, and what would it look like? Well, it's not something we have to consider. We all know about the amount it's going to be. You know, it's going to be, well, fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. Either we take that out of our budget, or we have fees. Each are completely acceptable. But if you take out our budget, then you're saying taxpayers, you're going to pay for this, instead of the people who are directly benefiting, the people who get to the ceremony. And that's the reason I think most places go with, it's a ceremony. You know, if it was something where you're going to get ahead of time and it's going to be a big deal, it's going to be a separate item on the agenda. We'd have it before the budget. We'd have an item that said, if that's what you wanted, we'd have an item which said, hey, we're going to consider fees, just like we're going to have something for, you know, consider our food service program. But that's not it. We would just bring in a clarification, because, because someone wanted to know. Didn't even know that it was going to be voted on, you know, had, had no clue about that. So no, we weren't preparing for a vote. We weren't preparing for anything. No, you didn't drop the ball. We were bringing information from a question about a huge topic, a one small thing. And so, you know, it's just gone farther tonight than I think people would have anticipated. But Member Singwald said it best. I mean, if this is something that the board wants to consider, we'll have a line item in the future. Yes, and we'll have, we should be at a work session. It shouldn't be right now here. We'll have it at a work session. And, you know, it's not going to change our budget any more or less, two months from now, than it is today. And so we can absolutely bring this question back, and if you really want to talk about it. But if, it's only if you really want to talk about it, you know. I mean, right now, it's just not been an issue. If you want to talk about it, we can. We have always lots of things to talk about. So, you know, I would suggest we, we move on, and we can, we, we can address this if you, if, if you want at a later time, and let's get our budget passed.
So the motion right now is to amend the budget to cover graduation for two thousand and eighteen. Summarizing that.
Yep, and just a point of clarification, also for Board Member Saucer. So depending on how this vote goes, and knowing how Robert's rules work, if this doesn't pass, then there's some logistics as far as, and we've experienced that already this spring, about, you know, then how do we bring it back if we do want to consider it right now? On the flip side, is it a consideration to withdraw that motion, and then the board can decide whether or not we are going to more deeply discuss a change, which we could, as a line item opportunity, and that the board as a group decides that, yes, we want to pursue this discussion or not, rather than a single one? And so I'm just laying out options that either we move forward with the motion on the table right now, which, if we want to rediscuss it, if it doesn't pass, is going to be a little bit more complicated. Or we could move, you know, have that particular one withdrawn, move forward with what the administration brought back, and then we, as a board, make a request to take a deeper dive, so that those of us at the table who may need to process things more can have that time.
I'd be more than willing to withdraw the motion, but I would like to see the discussion in the future. And it's why I had brought it up, so that we would have time before today. And like I had been said, we'd be talking about it a couple of weeks ago. I'm not going to keep going over this. But I had asked to have time to do it, as long as I have the guarantee that we'll have the discussion later and go forward. I, I know that amendments can be made. I'd like to see that, at least that discussion with more information. I totally understand we're processing time. I was hoping to have that as well. I will officially withdraw the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
And I would, with all due respect, Mr. Hogan, it has been asked to be brought up and be discussed. And it has been kind of ignored, in my opinion. And so, you know, without, it isn't just a final hour thing. This, this was brought up through questions a, a couple of months ago. And so I, I agree with Member Saucer. I think we do need to have a discussion about it then, so that we can all become fully informed and look at future. And I had no idea that we're two years out from we can't even fit. And so those are things we need to talk about clearly, because we're going to need to know probably a year ahead, what we're going to do to reserve if we're, if we're doing that. So I guess I would just like to, to just say, if we could actually discuss it, because I know it has been asked to be discussed, and it feels like it's not, it's being ignored.
And we will, we'll put it on one of the next, it won't be July. We don't have a work session in July, but probably the August or September work session, now that we have a full picture of what graduation two thousand and seventeen looked like. All right, so the motion has been withdrawn. Are there any other questions on the budget as a whole? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
I will move to adopt the recommended fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget, and food service five cent breakfast and lunch price increased as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Singwald, a second by Goodrow. Roll call, vote please.
Carraro?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Goodrow?
Yes.
Saucer?
Yes.
Singwald?
Yes.
Cordis?
Yes. Motion passes. Next up, we have the approval of the food service contract, again with Ms. Jane Huska.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to apologize for not being more timely with it. It was one of those things, to be honest, that slipped my mind, because the whole process went very easily, simply. We started the process in about February to put out a call for bids per statute, old statute, every three years, we had to go out for a bid. So we went through the whole RFP process. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and only one vendor showed up, and that was Chartwell's. Not to say that in prior years, we've had multiple vendors show up. Each year that they have come, they ask, wow, or you know, the comments that they, after we take them on a tour, because we have to show them in elementary, and middle school, and the high school. So they know when they're bidding, what, what type of service they need to provide, when they're going to come into our schools. And the comments that we usually get are, wow, you have a really nice program. Oh, I don't, I don't know what we can do to get your, your business. So it's, it's not because there's not vendors out there, and it's not because we don't have a great program. It's because we do have a great program. They just don't know how they're going to compete with it. And so Chartwell's was the only ones that came. They were, therefore, since they were only the ones at the mandatory meeting, they were the only ones that were able to submit a bid. And even though they knew that coming in, that they were the only ones that were going to be able to submit a bid, they still maintained their prices for the sixteen seventeen school year. And I think that shows great integrity, that they knew they were going to be the only ones, that they still maintained their same cost at eighteen cents per meal. They also included ten thousand dollars in the budget to upgrade our signage within our food service program. They're going to continue our, their support for our scholarships that they have, and the reading grants that they have at the middle school. When the bids came in, they had an estimated gain of roughly three hundred and twenty-seven thousand with the budget that you just approved. It's an estimated three hundred and fifty-three thousand. And so again, with the legislature passed, this contract is renewable for not more than four years. So we will hopefully be able to do that. One of the things that we are also very conscious of is that the fund balance for our food service program, and making sure that it accurately reflects our program. And so there are some things within our program that we would like to update. We will be getting a grill for our Bachman Middle School, because there's some new things that we'd like to introduce for the program there. And we need some new hot wells, two at Dodge and one at Bachman, so we're going to upgrade that. We also have some other things that we're going to take this next year to evaluate, because there are some other needs within our food service program that, and hopefully, we'll be able to get something done next summer for some of our schools. So we will be taking some time to try to spend down that fund balance, because we do have needs. And it is now at a healthy balance where we feel we can accomplish that. Does anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the food service management contract between Independent School District one ninety-two and Chartwell's, effective July first, two thousand and seventeen, through June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Carraro, a second by Goodrow. Roll call, vote please.
Carraro?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Goodrow?
Yes.
Saucer?
Yes.
Singwald?
Yes.
Cordis?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Next. Thank you, guys.
Board Member Chair, can I just make one comment?
Yes.
We do have people from Chartwell. Your food is fantastic. The distinguished banquet, I, unbelievable. I explain to people what we have there, and they can't believe that we can cook that in the school district. You have a great group. So thank you for everything that you and your group do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got another routine piece of business, which is establishing the school board and committee meeting dates. It's attached to the packet. There are no substantial changes. The only difference between any of our regular meetings is the time for, the time and date of the joint meeting. Again, that's the third Monday of July, and we're bumping it to seven o'clock to align with the city council schedule. Other than that, everything is pretty much the same, second and fourth Mondays. Yep.
We ended up canceling our end of March due to spring break, and looking at the school calendar, it lands during spring break also. And I'm just wondering if we can make a, an amendment to this next year's scheduled meetings to read, instead of second and fourth Mondays of each month, except for July and December, to add the month of March, and actually remove the one that lands during spring break, and make a recommendation that if the administration has items that can't be covered, that way they can plan for, this is our only meeting in March potentially, and that if there's any additional items that might need to happen at next March, that they can call, request a special session that would land probably outside of spring break.
I don't see any problem with that.
Excellent recommendation. I was going to bring the same thing up.
Yep, we can do it that way. All right, so that would be, I don't have the spring break.
Twenty-six.
I can just make the amendment that the, the motion would change from what was on our agenda to just add March.
Okay.
To, because it's just indicating that there's a variance in that month, just like there's a variance in July and December.
Sounds good. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll make the motion to set the school board meetings for the two thousand and seventeen eighteen school year on the second and fourth Mondays of each month, except for the months of March, July, and December.
Second.
Got a motion by Singwald, a second by Saucer. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Carraro?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Goodrow?
Yes.
Saucer?
Yes.
Singwald?
Yes.
Cordis?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, next up, we will move into our policy action for tonight, and we've got the final reading of a couple of policies with Ms. Barb Duffrin.
I don't have anything new to say about either of those policies. The one thing I will clarify is, last time, I wasn't sure if they were the most updated, because I had seen that the, and they are. They are the most updated versions.
Any last minute questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy five oh six, Student Discipline and Policy five fifteen, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records as Presented.
And a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Carraro, a second by Goodrow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, moving on to board remarks. Let's start with Steve.
Again, I, the biggest thing was graduation, the administration, faculty, and everybody. That was fantastic. And it's kind of good to have graduation behind us, at least for me, with one graduating now off to college. Kind of gives me a little reprieve now, but thank everybody, including yourselves, for, it was a job well done.
Jacqueline?
I'll just echo what Steve said. It was just really nice to be able to be up there and see all the students, and it was definitely emotional for a lot of them, and just for parents and family members. So it was really nice to be able to be a part of that.
Kristin?
Same thing for me, and I'm going to be, next year, having my first child graduate. So I'm going to, it's going to be a much different experience. So it was fun to see it this year, so I can prepare myself. But I also wanted just to shout out to all of the girl athletes, too. What an amazing accomplishment. So cool to see that, see the first state championship. And those softball players, I just hope they always hold on to that, and they will remember it for a long time to come, so. And, and the other athletes as well. So it was just really cool to see them tonight, too.
Just echo, I mean, graduation is awesome, and it's, I think, really neat, you know, to, to watch these kids and their families and all of that. But I think one of the things that really struck me this year, too, is talking with staff and their level of engagement in watching these kids that they've invested so much time in. And it, it's not just the high school. I mean, it's running into the first grade teacher that's showing up at, at the grad parties and that kind of stuff. It just, it's amazing to see the investment that our staff, regardless of what their role is in the district, have for our, our students. And I think that, that's simply an amazing thing. I appreciate the busyness. You know, I'm, I'm chuckling as I drive past the district also and watching all these things torn up, and it's exciting. It's exciting to be able to be in a district right now where we are able to make upgrades and improvements in our buildings, because many of our surrounding districts aren't necessarily sitting in that position. And so I know that Ms. Huska says at, at every meeting, but our community's support for our, our district is huge. And so I'm, I'm so appreciative of, of that aspect of it also. And I look forward to what, what's to come in the next year and see the, the summer flies by, and pretty soon we'll be talking about how many kids are enrolling in our district, so. But that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Melissa?
The end of the year was great. Have the opportunity to serve on the intermediate board. I think I attended probably about eight or nine graduation ceremonies, because each of the individual programs has their own ceremony, and talk about just the level of success from students that have had very difficult paths to follow. And to be present at those ceremonies is just so special, just as special as every student that graduates. It's very special. But those ceremonies just mean a lot, and I'm grateful for that opportunity to be able to be there for those students as well, representing our district. It's just been a great end of the year, and wish everyone a wonderful summer. The buildings are still busy, even though there's construction. There are band lessons, there are swimming lessons. There is so much going on in the buildings, and thanks to all those that help keep the schools alive and the lights on throughout summer school as well.
Thank you. Taylor, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just congratulations to the athletes. Congratulations to the graduates. Keep sending party invites if you haven't had your party yet. I always enjoy the free food. And yeah, have a good summer to everybody. And yeah, that's all I got.
And I'd just like to echo what everyone said so far about grad, graduation. Congratulations to our newest round of alumni, Tiger alumni. And just also thank you to the district administration, district staff, building staff, custodians, everybody involved for another great year. Can't believe it's already over.
Yep.
Can't believe June's already over. But you're right, we'll be talking about October enrollment numbers.
It's a regular business meeting, I'm pretty sure.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn at seven fifty-eight.
A second. Got a motion by Singwald, a second by Doyle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Did I get it wrong?
He did.
I'm sorry. This meeting's adjourned.